All this meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. It is a regular meeting and it is February 18th, 2025. At the time is 6:05. Apologies for being late. Previous meeting ran long. Mr. Vina, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Saul Gonzalez, Ms. Garza.
Here.
Ray Houston.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Mendosa.
Here.
And Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Here.
All right, we will move on to our pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. All right, we will now begin our citizen comment period. City council will hear citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. There is a sign up process and speakers may speak once during citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. You'll have three minutes to speak when you state your name. You'll see the timer on the screen. You'll start in the green. When the timer shows only yellow, you have less than 20 seconds left. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. Mayor and council endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel and I will ask you to leave the council chambers. This is your warning. And we have several people who are going to address us tonight and somewhere I have that list. There it is. I will give the first few, thank you, in order if y'all could be ready. We have Ashley Prevost, Jack Thornton, Genesis Williams, Sloane Rucker, and Jennifer Lindsay. And Mr. Vina will be letting me know about those who are going to be speaking online. Is Ashley Prevost here? It is your turn. Just move that microphone wherever you need it.
The chances of survival after being shot dropped dramatically with every passing minute that first aid is delayed. That's why first responders, especially police officers, are trained in life-saving measures. They don't need a medic to tell them what to do. They know how to apply pressure to a wound. They know how to keep someone alive until the paramedics come. So why wasn't that done for Malachi Williams? If an officer pulls the trigger, shouldn't they also be responsible for rendering first aid? Isn't preserving the life of a, isn't preserving a life a fundamental part of their duty? What happened here wasn't just a failure of policy. It was a failure of humanity. Malachi was left to die. My name is Ashley and I'm a member of the San Marcos community. I'm here to bring attention to the details of Malachi Williams' killing. Details that should be noted by the public and that should concern all of us. The chief of police claims that first aid was rendered immediately after the shooting, yet the body cam footage from the officer who shot him conveniently cuts off at the moment that the shots were fired. If it weren't for a bystander recording, we wouldn't even know what happened after the shooting nearly a year later. Think about what that means. Those in power, those who control the evidence, also control the narrative. Even when they promise transparency, they manipulate the facts to fit their version of the events. We cannot stand here and speculate why this happened because speculation isn't necessary. We know what happened. We cannot allow for the San Marcos Police Department to continue spreading misinformation to protect itself along with CLEETS. We cannot let Malachi become just another statistic. He was just not, he was not just another victim of police brutality. The truth matters and Malachi's life matters. His family deserves justice. That was all.
Our next speaker is Jack Thornton.
How do you? My name is Jack Thornton. I've resided in San Marcos for three years now. I'm a volunteer and community organizer. Today, I am here to speak out about the utter lack of transparency in the contradictory statements by Police Chief Standridge made regarding the murder of Malachi Williams. Watching the body cam footage shows immediately that something is off. The officer allows the allegedly armed suspect to leave the store, then provides him what looks to be eight feet of space. Knowing what happens at the end of the body cam footage, I can't help but wonder why no better attempt to restrain him was made to begin with. The officer clearly feels comfortable using lethal force. I can't help but wonder what made him feel so squeamish about grabbing him or using some other non-lethal approach to begin with while his hands were visibly empty. But I'm not here to nitpick. What I am exceptionally perturbed by is the release of bystander footage that provides clear proof that Police Chief Standridge was lying when he claimed Mr. Williams received immediate aid. All of the events that transpired has an air of dragged feet. First, they refused to release the body cam footage. Then when they do, they omit what came after the officer fired their weapon, claiming it was to spare the family from having to watch the aftermath. Bystander footage shows a crowd of officers standing around and doing absolutely anything other than administering aid. So why the lie? Not only did they not administer aid for several minutes, but when he was finally taken to an emergency room, he was driven 20 minutes away to Kyle. Pretty sure we've got three facilities here in San Marcos. Whether this is due to outright incompetence or not is entirely your call, but there is a great deal of reason to believe that this incident did not have to end in the loss of life. Think it worse, however. Now that the community has learned that CLEETS was involved, a different story starts to be painted. CLEETS stands for Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas and were caught in a lie regarding to a reminiscent case involving Joshua Wright. Why all the waiting to give aid? Why driving such a long distance to medical care? Why calling CLEETS? Why the partial footage? The lack of transparency shakes trust, leaving gaps in the story forces us to fill them in. I want to trust our police, but I'll say the quiet part out loud. This smells like foul play. If we want the people to be able to trust the people who are sworn to protect, then I want to demand an explanation for why Chief Standridge doesn't have his facts straight. I want to know who was in the grand jury and I want to know CLEETS involvement in this case. I can't help but think about the $100 million that the police department is requesting right now. How many more dollars would they have needed to make sure Malachi survived? I think that we could actually save quite a bit of money from the police department. We fired people who ended up with these horrible inefficiencies. What happened April 11th could have been handled by two professional peace officers. Instead, we ended up with six officers standing around in a parking lot, an EMS unit, and a fire marshal.
Sir, your time is up.
Bring peace to this city. Give us the truth. Thank you.
Our next speaker, who is online, and I see him in the attendee room. Okay, is Genesis Williams.
Hello, my name's Genesis Williams. Malachi Williams unjustly killed at 22 years old by a San Marcos police officer outside Ventura, AKA Alex Ventura, AKA Ventura the villain. Since then, Ventura has been given a fitness award. For Ventura to be able to excel isn't hurting because we simply wish ill on him. It hurts us because we know he is certainly undeserving of that award. That at the hands of Ventura, Malachi won't be able to excel in his dream. Malachi will only remain secure in our hearts while Ventura will be secure in his position? This kind of rewarding behavior, no less than a year after Malachi's death, no less than a year of the officer's failing to render aid, at the hands of Officer Ventura is sickening and a complete smack in the face to his family. Furthermore, a mockery of this justice system. Justice for Kai.
I'm going to assume they're done. Next up is Sloane Rucker. For everyone, would you please state your name at the beginning of your comments?
Yes, I'm ready. All right. Hello, my name is Sloane Rucker. I'm here today to speak on what I view as an obviously wrongful murder of Malachi Williams at the hands of S and P D. I'm outraged at the way the city has responded to this clear instance of injustice. I'm just disgusted that you all are investing so much time and resources into saying that the murder of this young man was justified, when to my knowledge, after several fatal blows, no rescue aid was even administered to decrease the odds of fatality. Why was this police shooting so reckless? It is outrageous that as first responders, police officers would not know basic stop the bleed techniques to administer while awaiting paramedics. I don't believe that all that could have been done was performed to keep Malachi alive. This entire injustice, from the initial bullet to the city's response, is seeped in hostility and discrimination. To echo a few of y'all's points, I would also like to ask for transparency as to why and how the Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas or CLEET would have been involved in the aftermath of the shooting. Back in 2019, CLEET was the only statewide group to oppose a bill called HB 147 that would have allowed for the release of information around police alleged misconduct, which is extremely sketchy and suspicious and immediately raises a ton of red flags as to the character of that organization and their commitment towards transparency. So additionally, I would demand that for the investigation of the demographics of the grand, of the grand jury that failed to indict Alex Ventura. Grand juries in the U.S. are historically and presently overwhelmingly white, which calls into question the fairness and representativeness of these legal proceedings against a young person of color. A recent relevant example is the case of Breonna Taylor's murder, which was full of racial injustice through the grand jury process. It feels as if the powers that be are not acknowledging or learning from the past and getting mad at the general, at the general public for drawing these parallels. I also demand the investigation into what if any evidence was covered up, such as why Chief Standridge's description of the events does not fit what is presented in the video that I saw. The entire aftermath of Malachi's murder has not been transparent, but shrouded in secrecy and is extremely distressing. As a resident, I'm also alarmed that following a murder by S and P D, you all would give such a gargantuan amount of money to the department for 2025? Does a small city really need that degree of police presence and militarization? And if the police are shooting the most vulnerable of us out in the streets, how safe are they keeping us really? A city that funnels resources into a police department but doesn't provide oversight is a corrupt one that is bound to repeat atrocities time and time again. So in sum, I demand that the city intervene in the case to stop being on the wrong side of history. San Marcos has tightly knit communities and Malachi Williams' name is being kept alive in a well here. So we're not going to forget and we're not going to stop holding you all accountable for complicity in such an egregious tragedy. That's all.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Lindsay. I want to alert everyone that our next speakers in order will be John Mayberry, Gina Fleming, Miles Brownlee, and Sam Benavides. Ms. Lindsay, please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Lindsay and these comments are in regards to Agenda Number 10, the proposed data center on Francis Harris Lane. What is the current noise ordinance for light industrial within the city of San Marcos? Will dark sky lighting be considered for all outdoor buildings? What will the setbacks be for both Francis Harris Road and the private Grant Harris Road? Do we have a general idea of the size of the buildings? What will be the estimated daily water usage? Will it be public drinking water? Will any measures be taken to lessen the impact of the large amount of impervious cover expected? Cloud Burst has stated on their website that this location will be part of their flagship data center in central Texas and plans to aggressively grow its data center network. With a large amount of open farmland around the proposed site, should we expect further development from this company? Since Cloud Burst has already signed a long-term contract with Energy Transfer, the power plant already located on Francis Harris Lane, and KXAN reported on February 13th, an AI data center is coming to San Marcos, should we assume decisions to change zoning and city limit boundaries are already confirmed? Will Cloud Burst be responsible for answering any of these questions or have to provide plans for the development prior to the zoning change and incorporation into the city? Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is John Mayberry and he joins us in person.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is John Mayberry. I own approximately 136 acres at 904 Francis Harris Lane and am purchasing approximately 64 acres from my neighbors, the Tufts. The Tufts are keeping approximately 40 acres, which fronts York Creek Road. I am selling the property to a data center, which is why we are requesting annexation, preferred scenario map amendment, and rezoning. We are working with the data center buyer to answer the questions as they arise. I met with Ms. Lindsay and her sister, who have identified some questions that they presented to planning and zoning commission, and they submitted them in writing. We are working on getting all of those answers. Water and wastewater are topics of interest and we have confirmed that the data center uses a closed-loop water system. So once the system is filled and set, it continues to use the same water. We are working to quantify the amount of water that evaporates or is lost. As you know from the staff backup, we are obtaining water from Crystal Clear and electricity from Peternalis. With regard to wastewater LUEs, our initial site plan, our original site plan called for 470 homes and 470 LUEs. We have asked for the estimated number of employees at this site, which will be much less than the occupancy of 470 homes. We will have specifics when we return. I do want to note the low infrastructure and government resources needed for a data center. There is low traffic volume and no active loading docks. This is not an active warehouse. Limited emergency services are needed because the centers have their own security. And as you would expect, the centers have fire systems to protect the technology. In exchange, the city receives tax revenue. We are working to quantify the conservative estimate of value, but we know from a 94-acre site in Bear County that the valuation there is over $300 million. Finally, I would just stress that the adjacent use, the existing use, is a 1 gigawatt power plant. And if you all recall, two years ago, when I was before you zoning this for single-family homes, the power plant owners showed up and asked for a buffer because they were concerned about the proximity to the homes. This adjacent, consistent use would alleviate that concern. And then just one last comment. We have no affiliation with Cloud Burst. That is, that is not us. So I think the newspapers reported that. We have nothing to do with them or Energy Transfer at all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gina Fleming, who joins us online.
Yes, hello. I'm Gina Fleming and I'm also talking about the, wanted to comment on the amending the preferred scenario map from conservation cluster to commercial employment level. Jennifer Lopez, I mean Jennifer Lindsay addressed many of my concerns. I wanted to voice a few more. I'm a little confused by why John Mayberry is answering questions on behalf of the Cloud Burst Data Centers and Energy Transfer LP when, as he just explained, he's not affiliated with them. And I feel these entities should have at least been included in the, in the description of, of the item. What was mentioned at the planning and zoning meeting, I didn't feel there was enough emphasis that this was an artificial intelligence data center. John Mayberry made a comment that it's the usual, people are running it or the usual companies, but that everybody knows, but I don't think everybody knows. And this is not a typical data center. This is an artificial intelligence data center. They use a lot more energy and they use a lot more money. What, I mean, I'm sorry, energy and water. What I have been able to find out about Energy Transfer LP is that they were convicted of criminal charges in connection to a Pennsylvania pipeline in 2022, resulting in contamination of water supplies. The reporting I'm seeing in newspapers talks about the San Marcos Cloud Burst Data Center as if it already exists and Cloud Burst talking about their ambitious designs for expansion and their confidence of the vast pipeline network and storage capacity. I don't think we are talking about these gas pipelines. Also, a concern of mine is I know that the artificial intelligence data center going up in Abilene has a 50-year contract with Fort Stockton Holdings, which is a family 250 miles away that has extensive groundwater rights and the Edwards Trinity Aquifer. All this company has to do is find some part of the Edwards Aquifer that doesn't have the regulations we have. And I'm sure they have the money, means, and motivation to get that water to supply their vast needs. Thank you.
Okay, and our next speaker is Miles Brownlee. State your name.
Hello, my name is Miles and I'm a member of the San Marcos community here for three years. And I'm here to speak about the unjust killing of Malachi Williams by Officer Alex Ventura of the San Marcos Police Department in April of 2024. Despite clear inconsistencies between what is shown in video footage of the event and statements given by the police, a grand jury refused to indict Ventura for Malachi's murder. The police claimed to have rendered immediate aid, but a video taken by a bystander shows almost three minutes where they instead handcuff, search, and even kick him while he is bleeding out. This part is not included in the body camera footage that was released only after a months-long fight between the family and the police department. There is a disturbing lack of oversight for the San Marcos Police Department. San Marcos deserves to feel not endangered by our city officials, who should be accountable to us, not the other way around. I join with the family of Malachi Williams and the San Marcos community in demanding an investigation into the demographics of the grand jury, an investigation into what Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas were doing on the crime scene that night, and an explanation for why Chief Standridge's description of events do not match those in witness video.
Okay, and our last speaker will be Sam Benavides. Yes.
Good evening, council. Sam Benavides. Over the weekend, myself and several other speakers here tonight had the pleasure of joining the family of Malachi Williams for yet another beautiful event that they brought to San Marcos community. Together, we enjoyed free food, games, each other's company, and eventually gathered around to watch home videos of Malachi, reminding us how kind, funny, intelligent, and how deeply loved he was. We also watched witness footage from the night that Malachi was killed, which revealed deeply disturbing details that were omitted from the police's telling of events. While S and P D's carefully curated press conference back in August claimed that medical aid was rendered within a minute or less, witness footage that we obtained showed differently. This footage instead shows that rather than prioritizing the rendering of medical aid, officers approached Malachi as he laid on the ground, bleeding out. They turned him onto his stomach, handcuffed his hands behind his back, and then turned him back onto his back and still didn't begin rendering medical aid. Instead, they searched his pockets. Malachi is bleeding out, choking on his blood, and I apologize for the descriptiveness, but I think it's important to acknowledge fully just how disgusting this treatment by your officers was. As he's taking his last breaths, these officers are searching his pockets. I knew of these disturbing details before the body camera footage was released. I was prepared to witness this disgusting treatment, but what I wasn't prepared for was how these officers continued to berate Malachi after shooting him. As he laid there on the ground with his arms raised, choking on his blood, Ventura yelled at him not to make any sudden movements, again, he's laying on the ground, bleeding out, and even yelled loudly, "I told you to put your hands behind your back," as though Malachi deserved to be shot because he didn't do exactly as this officer asked him to do. I also found it deeply disturbing that the medics actually had to ask the officers to come back and undo the handcuffs on Malachi because they were getting in the way of their life-saving measures. Another disturbing detail emitted from the August 16 press conference was what happened outside of that convenience store. I think often about the vigil that Malachi's family held two weeks after he was killed. When his mother asked if Malachi did run, what did the officer do to make him run? She asked that question two weeks after he was killed. Obtain, and that wasn't, that wasn't answered even during the August 16 press conference. Obtaining that footage weeks after the police press conference revealed that Ventura unnecessarily unholstered his gun, prompting Malachi to flee likely in fear for his life. I find it interesting that the police didn't think this was relevant to share and instead worked overtime to villainize Malachi while his family is grieving. I want you each to seriously think about how this, if this was your son, your brother, your nephew, your cousin, how you would want public officials to respond.
And your time is up. Wrap it up in a sentence, please.
I just read the story that I just shared with you, which there's a lot more detail. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Shanta Miller. Is Shanta Miller here?
No, she's not here.
Okay.
I have Eli Doyle next. Oh, I thought you said that was the last speaker. I'm sorry.
I was working with a draft list. That was my bad. Ms. Trevino has brought me a new list. Is Eli Doyle here? Okay.
Hello, my name is Eli Doyle and I'm here to speak today to honor Malachi Williams, to speak in support of his family, who have had to endure not only his murder by S and P D Officer Alex Ventura, but the accompanying callousness, cowardice, and incompetence of the San Marcos Police Department, Chief Standridge, and this council, and refusing to actually be in accountability with Malachi's family and our community. Y'all say that you're here and that you care, yet things do not add up. And as of this evening, injustice continues. Y'all may have heard of Gray's Law, which states, "Any sufficiently advanced incompetence is indistinguishable from malice." The body cam footage, in addition to the bystander footage, have shown at best utter incompetence on the part of Alex Ventura, Chief Standridge, and S and P D in general, if we are to believe that they cared at all about Malachi Williams' life, his humanity, and the humanity of his family. If that is the best-case scenario, a believable worst-case scenario is malice. At every step of the process, there has been deliberate attempts to hide what has actually happened. And the family continues, Malachi Williams' family continues to hold benefits for the community in honor of his life. They care so deeply about the things he cared about. They continue to care about our community and y'all let them down every single day that you allow this to continue happening. Other people have already expressed the demands of this family and the demands of the community far better than I would be able to in this moment. You should be ashamed. You should be ashamed that you sit comfortably in the face of such rage and such grief and such continued determination. I am ashamed for you. Please, it is never too late to make a different decision. You can always help bring justice. You just have to choose to. That's all I have to say.
My name is Wayne Miller. I am Staff Sergeant Wayne Miller, United States Army. I put my life on the line for this country. And somebody put my grandson in the ground because of their incompetence. Now let's just take a moment, please, and think, if what we're saying today is true, are you disgusted? Can I get a show of hands, please? If we're telling the truth, 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 are you disgusted at what happened? I saw some hands that did not raise. I kindly ask you to step down from the position that you hold and find something else to do. This is not your piece of cake. This is not for you. You see, Standridge will continue to lie. We have proof of his lies. And I want to ask you to investigate the things that we have brought up before you today and see if it's truth or not. If it's true, I ask you to do something about it. But if you are so careless and so callous that you can't even raise your hand that you can't even raise your hand in solidarity with the truth, then you need, I mean, please, don't come into work tomorrow. Resign, because I can't get anywhere with you. The city can't get anywhere with you. There's nothing that you have to offer because you can't feel anything. You can't feel compassion. You can't feel anything. And that is your problem. That's the problem with San Marcos, the city. Because you see, anybody can do anything if you don't stand up against it. And what's on my doorstep today will be on yours tomorrow. You can't let crime, my crime or anybody else's crime, go without consideration of doing something about it, whether that person is a policeman or the person that walks the street with no hope. You see, we say that we are all created equal. Let's be equal. Let's be righteous, and let's do the right thing.
And that concludes our citizen comment. We'll move on to our consent agenda.
I'm sorry, Malachi's mother was having technical difficulties. She just talked to me. Her comment, it's really short.
I'll allow it if it's really short. Would you give me, would you give me her name?
This is from Ms. Shanta Miller.
Oh, we have her signed up.
Yeah, she was having technical difficulties.
Okay, now, go ahead.
Malachi is my son. I love my son so very, very much. Officer Ventura had no right to take my son's life. He pulled a gun on him as he had hands up coming out of the store as requested. No knives in hand. He ran out of a forced fight or flight situation, shot him in the back, and looked at him like a deer kill. This is unjust. That is clearly murder. No one is trial and jury but a trial and jury. Police do not decide who lives or dies, especially if it's untrue. I love you, Malachi. A badge is not an authorization to kill at will.
And that concludes our citizen comment for the evening. We are on to our consent agenda, which is following ordinances, resolutions, et cetera, numbered one through nine, but be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussion or action is necessary unless a council member pulls that item, in which case we will consider that after public hearings. Usually, there are no public hearings tonight. So, I'm going to pull item five. Counsel, do y'all, anybody else have anything they want to pull? Oh, I think I want to pull item eight. I think that's the one I want. Yes. Anybody else? Okay, then I will accept a motion to approve one through four, six, seven, and nine.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez, and let's vote on that. Oh, push button.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay. So, would you read item five, please?
I'm sorry, may I remember it? Are we going back to five? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, remember, we don't have public hearings tonight, so we'll go straight to the, yeah.
They consider approval of resolution 2025-24R approving change in services to the contract with Pyro Shows of Texas, Inc. for fireworks services that extends the existing contract term for an additional year in the amount of $39,500, bringing the cumulative amount over the contract term to $128,700. Authorized City Manager designated to execute the change in service on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
That's approved.
I will second that. And I've got questions to make sure that I understand, because I put something on the message board, and I'm, and I, we don't get to interact after the response is put out there. What I'm actually looking for is, we hear that we need more money in the Parks Department for everything that y'all do.
Maintenance.
So well. And so I'm looking at something that's being increased, but yet sometimes we get donations. My point that I was trying to make is if we say we need X, it looks like we're increasing this by the donations we expect to get. My point is if the show that we want is X, then that's what we planned for. And then if we get any donations, then that goes against the fireworks. I wasn't suggesting that we spend it anywhere else, but that goes against the fireworks. But that leaves you some money that would have been spent for fireworks to be used for something else. Where am I misunderstanding?
Sure. Jamie Lee Kayce, Director of Parks and Recreation. So, there's a couple of different components to this.
Thank you.
The contract itself is, whenever, for this one example, it is a one-year annual contract with five options to renew, so essentially could be up to a five-year contract with this particular vendor. Initially, whenever it was first approved, it was $20,000 a year because of the cost of fireworks to ensure that our duration is the same. It had to be, the annual amount had to be increased by $25,000. Then, on top of that, we do receive donations, as you mentioned. Anytime that you're adding additional money, if you're expending against that contract, you have to raise that contract value as well, which is what's happening before you this evening.
Right.
We're just matching up with the funds that have been received so that we can actually expend against them.
Okay.
This actually is for our, I think, our upcoming, I'm sorry, no, I think it's for our previous show. We still owe the vendor. And so this is to, we can't.
Several questions.
Yeah, so we can't cut the check until our value on our contract matches what's in our account, basically, if that makes sense. So we're just making sure that everything is set.
And we know the donations that we got for last year.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Because it looked like we were making a sum. I was assuming, silly me, that this is for.
This upcoming year. Yeah, I could absolutely see how you would. And I really tried to make something that's really complicated as simple as possible, because it, even myself, as I was trying to kind of absorb everything, it was, it is very complicated because there's a couple of different components to it. So this is just for last year's show.
Okay, but my point, my main point still remains, I get all that with the money, is that, here's what I'm concerned about, is if we get donations one particular year and we do this humongous show, and for whatever reason, the contributions against that don't come in the next year, then it's odd, gee, why isn't this show as good as last year?
Sure.
Why not just do basically the same show with whatever we need to spend to do that? And I realize that price is going to go up.
Sure.
So why are we intentionally saying, oh, we're going to do this because I thought it was going to be the next year? I didn't realize it was the previous year. But still, why not just do the same show? If we get donations, that's great. We can use some of that money someplace else. Why, why, why are we varying it depending on what contributions we get or think we're going to get?
Sure, so we, again, we have a 20-minute show. We, regardless of the amount of donations that we get, we have a 20-minute show.
Right.
All that the additional donations provide is the bigger shelves for the bigger, the bigger displays, the bigger bang-for-your-buck, if you will.
More boom.
More boom, right. So that, that is all, if we receive donations, it goes towards the bigger, high-dense, you know, finales and those kinds of things.
Which will adjust people's expectations for the next year, which may or may not happen.
Correct, and it's a nice surprise when it does happen. I don't, I don't know how we can.
And then we hear about it when it's, man, that show wasn't near as good as last year.
And I understand that. Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
I just need to make sure, I still don't understand why we're doing part of this, but I get what we're doing, so. Anybody else have a question? If not, I just remember, we need money in the Parks Department.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, and item eight.
Consider approval of resolution 2025-27R approving an agreement for the provision of services in connection with the proposed owner-requested annexation in case number AN-25-02 of approximately 63.578 acres of land generally located between Francis Harris Lane and York Creek Road, approximately 1,200 feet east of the intersection between York Creek Road and Kenny Creek Road in Hayes County, Texas. Authorized City Manager designated to execute said agreement on behalf of the city, setting a date for a public hearing concerning the proposed annexation of said tract of land and declare an effective date.
I think I hear Mr. Scott with a motion to approve, and I will second it. Is the provision of services the only thing that we're being asked to do at this point in time? Because I watched the P and Z meeting that was the zoning, and that's coming to us in another few weeks, correct?
This item is provision of services, approval of the service agreement that's in your packet, as well as setting the public hearing date for the annexation. What you saw at P and Z last week is the presentation I'll be giving you in item number 10.
Oh, that's right, it is on this agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
I did read that. Never mind. It's been a long day. Okay, so. Oh, yeah, okay, got a whole nother question on item 10. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Let's vote, Ms. Trevino.
Motion passes five to two.
All right, and we will go on to, go on to said item 10.
Receive a staff presentation discussing request by Armrest and Brown, P L L C, on behalf of Highlander SM1 LLC and Donald and Jermaine Tough to amend the preferred scenario map from conservation cluster to commercial employment low for approximately 199.49 acres of land generally located in the western side of Francis Harris Lane, south of the intersection between Grant Harris Road and Francis Harris Lane in Hayes County, Texas.
Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. And this is a preferred scenario map. It is not a zoning, which is why it's not a public hearing. I'm, I'm cluing in. Okay, presentation.
Mayor and Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This request is for an approximately 200-acre property, which is partially in city limits. The property is surrounded by rural, residential, vacant, and agricultural land, as well as the Hayes Energy Power Plant. The small square that's highlighted in yellow in the center of the property is a cemetery not owned by the applicant and not part of the request that you will see on your agendas. Next slide. Currently, the land is identified as conservation cluster on the comprehensive plan preferred scenario map. The applicant is proposing a light industrial use, which, as you heard earlier, is selling the property to a data center, and a zoning change request will be required. I'd like to note that the applicant reached out regarding the recent media coverage that we've all heard about the new data center in San Marcos. That is not this applicant. It's a different type of data center, as they've explained it to us. In order to request the light industrial zoning that's necessary for the data center, the preferred scenario map must first be changed. Next slide. Much of the land in our ETJ is designated as conservation cluster. Residential and some commercial uses are anticipated or were anticipated in these areas as we were going through that comprehensive plan update just recently. And cluster developments are preferred where environmental features exist. The applicant's request is to change to commercial employment low, which is to allow the proposed light industrial zoning. There was a question on the message board. I'll just summarize that commercial employment low is that big light industrial type of development. And as you get into the commercial employment medium, talking about smaller, commercial-type businesses, we do not have commercial employment high in San Marcos because those would be high-rise, multi-story, office, commercial-type uses that you'd see in larger cities. Next slide. This is the existing zoning map and the environmental features map. The land is not in an environmentally sensitive area. Next slide. Roads may be required as the property develops to comply with the city's transportation master plan. At this time, the city is not the electric or water provider, and the developer would seek to connect to the city's wastewater. There was a question on the message board about the impact to wastewater service, and from our utility director, typically industrial uses do not have a great impact on the wastewater system. Specifically related to the data center, the applicants indicated that there is a closed-loop system where the water recirculates through their system versus being discharged into our wastewater system. Next slide. This brief presentation was intended as an update to city council and the public to let you know that this request is coming, and it's coming soon. The development code requires updates at Planning and Zoning Commission, which occurred last night, last night, last week, and Neighborhood Commission, which will occur tomorrow evening. That will wrap up our updates, and we will start moving through the public hearing process, which begins next week at Planning and Zoning Commission. Tonight, I'm here to gather your comments, your questions, so we can include any additional information you'd like to know in those public hearing packets. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, well, I was right. The zoning is yet to come. This is the preferred scenario.
Yes, ma'am.
Amendment. Mr. Gary, is it out of order to talk about zoning at this point of what goes in the commercial low?
You can talk about what does it mean to be within this preferred scenario. So you can talk about types of zoning that are allowed in there.
Okay. All righty, let me see what other questions anybody's got. Mr. Gonzalez.
Oh, thank you. Can you explain to me the closed, closed-loop system?
I did the best I can. I say that you pour water in a bucket, and it recirculates through the business without coming back out through the wastewater system. We do have a representative of the applicant here. If you'd like a more detailed description of what that is.
Are we talking about the AC system, or?
For the coolant, the coolant of the things in the data center.
If I can't just inject on that one.
Yes.
Twenty-one years of being a data center's call center is almost the same thing. Yes, they are absolutely huge wastes of water, except the last eight years now. Google, Cisco, and Apple themselves have helped create this loop system. So if you think about it, it's like the car wash systems. The reason why they use so much water is to cool for their render servers, basically. They have floors full of servers, but it's also used for water because most of these data centers also have kitchens, full-service cafeterias for their employers, or their employees that work 24 hours a day. So these data centers are 24 hours a day. So you're getting constant use of water, constant use of electricity, again, because it's a 24-hour facility. This loop system is, what it does is it picks up water, just like giant retaining, wherever they want to put it, whether it's on the office, like outside the building or underneath the building, and it continuously uses the same water system along with, we know it as, like the coolant you just put in the system, car systems, to help refrigerate it. It's what that does, and it's very rarely changed because it's a closed system. Now, they do upgrade it when you have more servers, but when places like this, when they develop their buildings, when they get all that stuff done, they're looking at 40 or 50 years in advance for their servers because these are businesses that cannot let anything go hot. So it's above important to make sure that everything here is cooled nonstop. So that's kind of what that means. Sorry, that kind of go into.
They're, they're not using the refrigerator system at all to keep it at a certain temperature?
The coolant itself does that because it's also in a closed system, so there is.
I show that.
There is a temperature gauge on there, just like any other AC system for any server room. And yeah, if something does happen that they can't actually go in there and repair it and do things like that, but there is a nonstop monitor 24 hours a day. Because if a server goes down, then you're losing customers or data, you're pretty much going out of commission.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it, there's just one clarification.
Yes, sir.
But this is good to see that data centers have invested in this technology, otherwise.
Otherwise, it would dump it in the water.
Well, it's, it's the water use of, that's equivalent of, the water that could be used by thousands of people.
Right.
Thousands of people. So that's good. Now, what we're talking about there is a proposed use of the property. And when this comes back for zoning, I will be reminding folks that whatever that zoning is, just forget about what you used to call the pretty pictures and all the other stuff, because what you're going to be looking at is the zoning. And I'm still going to ask questions about the other type of zoning and why it can't be that. But for this particular item, I'm going to be able to support this, so. Yes, ma'am?
I had questions in. Things proposed, but I wasn't anticipating that earlier. So I was just going to ask if we could take like a 10-minute break. That was a lot for me personally. I don't know about y'all.
Sounds rough.
So we can just have a 10-minute break so I can come back and just turn it back on.
All good with a 10-minute break? We've been here an hour.
That's fine with me, too.
We'll come back at 7:05 and pick up where we. We'll come back at seven oh five and pick up where we left off here. Break at seven oh six, we were discussing item ten. A request to amend the preferred scenario map. And there is, um, no vote on this, but it will come back to us for a vote in the future. Questions?
Uh, yes, uh, so I heard, um, you know, the, uh, both by the property owner to sort of differentiate themselves versus Cloud Burst. That, you know, they don't have anything to do with that. That doesn't make me feel better, however, though. Because when you look at Cloud Burst website, as well as comments they're making publicly, it was mentioned earlier, it does very much seem as if this, they've agreed on something that they think is already happening. So much so that investments went up around the time they announced this. And so I'm just wondering, do now we have to potentially be worried about having two data centers in one city?
I don't know the answer to that question. I will tell you that Christian Smith is here as well with our economic development team. This is the only data center that we're actively working through applications with right now.
Because on their website, um, it has the goal date of the same, it follows the same calendar sometime in mid-April, as so does this one. And so, again, I, it, that doesn't look good. And so unless they're on some similar schedule and we're hearing a similar item...
Yeah, I have no other applications in process, neither does economic development for any other data centers. I haven't looked at that website, I can go check it out, but this is the only active application. It's three, annexation, preferred scenario, and zoning, but it's all one project, and it's the only one.
Can we maybe have some answers as to why they would have, on their website, saying that they are creating a flagship data center in San Marcos, Texas, set for April or May of twenty twenty-five?
San Marcos, California, too.
It was San Marcos, Texas.
What, what I will say in full disclosure, yes, this is the only data center we have an application for. There has been interest of other, other surrounding property owners who have also had interest in data centers. So I don't want to mislead you to think that there's been no interest expressed of any other data centers, because I know that we have been approached by others that, that may be interested in doing that. But this is the only formal application that we have at this time.
And any other that we may have had conversations with, if they don't have an application in process right now, there's no way they're on your agenda in April.
Correct.
So, if I was Cloud Burst, and I announced that I'm supposed to follow the same timeline, which is opening by, or starting in April, sometime April or May, according to their website, in San Marcos, Texas, as well as comments that have been made by that company, can you tell me with full, and I'm speaking to the property owner, can you tell me with full confidence that they are not referring to your property that's under current discussion?
I, I could tell you with a hundred percent confidence. I, I don't even know who they are, and I'm, it speaks, I've read the article, I got a lot of calls about it, because the article just implicated us. And I, from what I could tell, Cloud Burst put out a press release, whoever they are, and then they found our planning and zoning agenda item, and the reporter just said, same deal. Their, their press release said there's a, there's a signed deal in place between energy transfer and Cloud Burst. I'm not a party to anything with either of those companies anywhere, and had never even heard of them until that article came out. So, um, I, I couldn't be more definitive about that. It's, it's not even possible.
The article aside.
Yeah.
This is, I'm, I'm just pulling straight from their website. And there were even reports of stocks rising when it comes to energy transfer, natural gas. And so I just want, as a policymaker, and somebody making a decision, so now I'm, I'm to worry that we are potentially worried about two data centers in one city versus one, in a city's less than a hundred thousand people.
I can't speak to them, I, all I can say is, we are not them.
Okay, so we are worried about two, okay. Okay, that's particularly concerning. I also, it was mentioned earlier, uh, some of my colleagues may have potential conflicts of interest. Um, and I just want us to review our conflict of interest, uh, policy. Uh, I mean, there was, maybe we can roll the tapes back, but there was, uh, definitely employment ties and concerns. And so as this moves forwards, I just hope that that would be something that we would look at, to make sure that, you know, perhaps my colleague's Mr. Mendoza is not voting on something that may be tied to his employment as well. So I don't know if there's, you meant specific ties to that?
I'm a thousand percent okay with that. I mean, of course, we go through how it benefits with that, but absolutely, um, that's, yeah, of course.
So, yeah, we, we do recuse, and also, uh, because we did have some folks in the past that would mumble something into the microphone, but I'm refusing on that, and leave. Uh, our rules do say that if you're recusing, you say why you're recusing. So that's one of the rules that we have. Occasionally, it's not followed, but I'm going to do the best I can to make sure it is.
Appreciate that. And last question, um, only because I'm ignorant to it, and I think it was mentioned in the P and Z meeting. What's the process to get like a preferred scenario amendment changed? Like, how frequently is this allowed to happen? Is this a frequent thing that happens?
Well, I'll tell you, we have had one in the last seven years. This is the second.
Pretty impressive.
Now that we have a new preferred scenario map with our new comprehensive plan, I anticipate we'll get a handful here and there. There is a section in our code that limits them to twice per year, with certain exceptions. And usually, economic development incentive-type things are the exception, because we want to make sure we can keep those economic development agreements moving, but most others are limited to twice per year.
Okay. And, uh, we're still early in the year, so I imagine this is probably the first one this year?
This is the first.
Okay. Um, I think that was all my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay, can I ask either you or, or Mr. Gary to explain that, generally speaking, we do not, uh, deal with the actual business that's coming to San Marcos, unless it's asking for an incentive. Zoning is set, once zoning is set, if someone meets all the requirements, they can build, and we're, we're, e- either one of you or both, if you could go through that a little bit for us, please?
Maybe I jump in before Sam, he won't get a chance to speak.
And I've already given half of it, so, anyway.
What we're going through right now is called the entitlement process. So this property is partially in the ETJ, as was noted in the previous presentation outlined in yellow, and it's gray on this map. So number one, they have to come into city limits, because they want to. Then they will ask to zone the property, which is to light industrial in this case. But because that light industrial zoning doesn't match the map on the next slide, which is green, conservation cluster, this is another layer of them having to get an approval from city council to change that green to pink. If that green doesn't get turned to pink, if y'all deny the preferred scenario amendment request, they can't even ask for zoning, because it does not align with the preferred scenario map. So it's kind of a Lego build that we're doing here, that we're going to annex first, change the preferred scenario map, then consider zoning. When zoning is in place, and you'll see in your packet next meeting, no, two meetings from now, we'll have zoning spreads from our development code, where you'll get to see, as some of the questions that came up earlier, setbacks impervious cover the different uses that are allowed in the different zoning districts, as Mayor Houston had referenced. We'll, we'll talk about all of that in the zoning presentation. But if the zoning is approved, then the developer is done with the public process, and they go through the administrative process of getting plat, permits, inspections, and ultimately, they build. But they can build anything that is listed within that zoning district. So we will definitely talk more about that next time.
Mayor, can I follow up unless Mr. Gary wanted to add anything to that, or? It sounds, you moved the mic, so it looked like Amanda got it all. Okay. So on that, I guess the characterization that council can't do anything to stop this would not be correct if this is contingent on us approving these things later down the line.
At this location, it's contingent on all of these applications that you'll hear in a few weeks.
So if people came to us as a body and said, hey, we're, we're not going for this, you do have the power, is what we're, I just wanted to clarify, point of clarification.
But we're not saying no to the business, we're saying no to the land use.
Yes, yes.
And that, that's the difference. So it might be that for, for the land use, we might be thrilled about one type of business and maybe not about others. But, uh, there's been so many of them that have to come to us for zoning, that when I drive by somewhere and there's like a big building going up, I go, wait, what, what, what happened? And I go, oh, that got zoned back in, you know, the, the nineties, and they met all the requirements, came in, pulled a building permit, and the building is going up. So...
I guess I have a follow-up question, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, Mr. On this, you indicated that, you know, what is it, Cloud Burst? The folks, they don't have anything on file with us, they haven't approached us. And what other, um, I guess mechanisms exist for folks to be contemplating that business? Because I know you're saying, we're talking about the land use right now. Does a, does a reality exist where Cloud Burst is talking to somebody else to, like, see the feasibility of like setting up shop here or something, like another group? Not us, because I mean, the website kind of sounds like...
To be more direct, is there any possibility that Cloud Burst, Cloud Burst is using a shell corporation to do all this, and then he's gonna end up...
That's not what I meant, but, I mean, I don't know, maybe.
I was going to ask that question.
I, I, I really don't know, I, I, I mean, Sam is also shaking his head, I don't know how we would know that. Could they be talking to someone else? It's coming through my department one way or the other. It's, it's going through Christian one way or another. Did they go straight to Hayes Caldwell Economic Development Corporation? Maybe, but usually those come back to us fairly quickly, so we should know.
But they don't have the power to do any zoning, so...
Right, um, I guess, and alternatively, if that particular company is talking to a landowner that already has land that's entitled, it's already zoned, those conversations could be happening, and we're not privy to them until they come in for permits. So if those...
At which point in time, we have, no.
Right, if it's already zoned. So if private conversations are happening, we wouldn't know about those yet.
On that, though, um, if that's the scenario that, that, because I completely believe that y'all haven't heard any, and y'all have no reason to lie about that. Is that a, a typical way we see people do business? Announcing a public, saying they already have a space, saying they have a day, a month that it's going to be ready?
Not something of this magnitude, I would say no.
Shareholders?
Christian, Mr. Smith's agreeing with me, not, something this big. It comes through the process, we hear about it months, years, in advance of it even getting on a city council agenda.
Because I wouldn't, I wouldn't to take the time to look at the pipeline that was mentioned on their website, and you know how they were saying how they were going to be one of the first to get a natural gas, and that's how they were going to be able to, to, to do that. I will, uh, tell my colleagues that we have a grid that relies about forty-eight percent on natural gas. A grid that, uh, state lawmakers continue to worry that it's going to fail inevitably. This is a conversation, as far as data centers and regulations, that even the state is realizing, hey, we need to start having. And so us moving forward on these things, it's not very often I would say, hey, maybe we should listen to what the state's saying. But on this one, you have state officials literally raising the flags about these things. I understand the fiscal benefits, but I'm just saying this, that's the only reason I brought up the whole Cloud Burst thing. It didn't look good, as far as to when I saw that schedule, and they have the same completion date. And now I'm even more concerned about our community potentially having two of these.
What is the legislature's concern?
Oh, man. So the legislature's concern, granted, the natural gas piping, um, that's not actually being done, because in Dallas, they have these things, they, I think they have like a hundred and seventy-four data centers in, in and around Dallas.
Yikes.
Yeah, it's massive. But that's outside.
We're talking about a land use here, and a data center. I don't know if a data center is piping gas, it's a data center. So I, I, I think we just need to rein it back into the, the posted agenda. I think we can talk about the kind of uses that are occurring, and whether it's a preferred use under the preferred scenario map.
Well, I think this relates to that. What does it mean when this site was described as having frontage on a major highway proximity to a major electrical substation, and access to multiple fiber providers? Like, does that have to do with the land? This is of the other...
If you're talking about Cloud Burst in the website, I don't have any of that information.
Well, what does it even mean, access to multiple fiber?
Okay, so now we're talking about a speculative company that, in other words, we've heard a statement from the owner that it's not Cloud Burst. I guess, I just want to be careful, we're talking about a press release, and we're not certain it's related to this tract of land, for which we're considering a preferred scenario amendment. So I think we just need to be a little careful. I, I'm hoping that maybe the, the owner or developer might be able to answer some of these questions, I don't know. By the time we get to public hearing...
And when it comes back to us, perhaps there'll be more information before we have to make, we're not even making a decision on this tonight. This is a, we're going to tell everybody we're going to do it, and then it comes back to us for a decision later.
Yes, and if I may, the applicant's summary and presentation to city council start on page two thirty-nine of the packet. That's the letter that they wrote to y'all, and I know we've been working with them on all of the questions that came during citizen comment period, especially at Planning and Zoning Commission. A lot of those were directed at the developer. So we want to make sure that we get as much of that information into the public hearing packet. You'll have everything that we have, but anything else, as Sam mentioned, is speculative, so we wouldn't bring that into the conversation at the public hearings.
Yeah. Okay, so we will have perhaps more of a conversation about this...
Next month.
In the future. But for now, I think the question is, are we comfortable with, and we're not in voting on this tonight, with conservation cluster going to commercial but employment low? And that's what the question really is.
And that will be the question at the first public hearing, and for tonight, of course, just the presentation.
Just gathering the comments, so I appreciate that. We'll work with the developer to see if they can provide any more information to those questions that were posed.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, to move on?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to clear that up, because it, in those articles, it was kind of making y'all the, y'all look bad. And so I just wanted to clear up that y'all didn't know anything about that, that was all to us.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Moving on to item eleven.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three on the first of two readings amending section two point zero two four of the San Marcos City Code to increase accumulative amount allowable amounts for certain city council expenses by ninety thousand in the categories of council expenses elected and council additional expenses, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date.
Approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Scott to approve. Is there a second?
Second for discussing, discussion purposes.
For approval?
Yes, sir.
All righty, I've got a bunch to say about this, but I'm willing to wait and let others...
Let's hear yours.
You really want to hear them?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Reyes, is this to cha- to alter our current budget, make changes for this year?
The way that, the way that I understand it is, is yes. It was to make, uh, changes to the current year budget, because it would be effective April first, if approved.
Honestly, I'm surprised that y'all put together an ordinance, because the only reason I said yes to look at this, I was waiting for more data, part of which I still don't have. I was blown away when I saw the ordinance in here, because I thought we were still going to discuss and kind of figure out where we were going. So that surprised me.
Okay, and, and, and pardon us if we misunderstood, it was, because when, usually when it's a council discussion item, then it's to bring back an action item, and council gave approval to bring, if they were interested.
Said to bring back information and data. But changing the budget mid-year to add a, in a huge expense like this, I think is totally irresponsible. So, uh, no way I'm going to do that. This is taxpayer money, and there are rules governing that kind of money. There are ethical rules, and there's transparency needed. Whenever we talk about what the expenses are, um... There's a lot out there that I've seen that I'm, I'm still scratching my head. Credit card, uh, expenses should have a receipt. And at the university, when you got the, had the privilege of having a credit card, um, you could use that. But anything that you didn't have a receipt to match up, went back and you owed the money, because you weren't providing the receipt. There are some changes that I'm going to suggest, and I'll come back with formal amendments. One of them is simple, it has to do with the per diem. And just to state that, it says per diem amounts, uh, at the current published IRS rates, I'm going to suggest that we add per city, because I did not know, until a couple of years ago, that per diem rates change by city by city. So I think I turned in a, a form for Washington DC with Texas rates. Guess what? They're different. So anyway, I think we ought to just put in here that it's, that we have per city. But, um, I'm just going to read two oh two four, council compensation and expenses, and three. Registration fees for individual council members to attend meetings, conferences, or tickets to local or charitable events. No reimbursements for events of political nature. When air travel is required to attend the conference, a council member must attend the majority of the conference sessions between the opening and closing sessions. Sessions attended must be educational in nature and relate to present or future issues pertaining to the city. Exceptions for attendance requirements can be taken to finance and audit committee for consideration. Exceptions for attendance requirements can be taken to finance and audit committee for consideration. Something that I had to do at the university, if I traveled, and I never even did an overnight, it was like daytime workshops, was, uh, I had to, to make a statement as to where I went, why I went and, and what I was going to learn and what I learned from there. They wanted proof that you had gone, like maybe a copy of the agenda or the program. And I'm going to suggest that we do something similar, because if you're out spending taxpayer dollars, I think a minimum is that you should have to state what that money was used for and how it benefits the city. Also, an item, uh, F, I forget which one it's under, where it says a council member may assign his or her unused funds to another council member and they only have to give notice to finance an audit, this has to be in writing. This used to be a council discussion and I'm gonna suggest that this goes back to a council discussion, going back to transparency. Somebody has overspent, they need to fess up and we'll see if somebody wants to cover their stuff. Under missing receipts, I think we need to limit the amount of funds allowed for missing receipts, like less than ten percent. Uh, I think we need to put the word travel back in, uh, to the, the name of the account. But I'm absolutely against doing this mid-year, we can talk about what we need to do for the following year. I don't think we actually need to do this, um, and so that's my position on things.
Cool.
You're for it.
Yeah.
Give your reasons why we should do it.
I, I'm for it, because the expenses have gone up across the board.
Can you put the microphone closer to your mouth? People are telling me they can't hear you at the meetings and this is important.
Again, expenses have gone up, this prices, this wage basically has been set since two thousand and ten when I was on council to begin with. Increase in hotel, increase in travel, increase in life, and the expenses have gone up. That's why I just said to double it, double the travel on it, it was real simple, wasn't going to be a big deal about it. So I know she apparently swayed other council members now to go against it.
I haven't.
I think you did.
I have not tried to sway anybody.
I think so. But anyway, um, that's all this was about, was just keeping up with the, keeping up with the Joneses. And also, accounting, uh, John actually put together for this year, I'm not, uh, mis- misunderstood by you, Stephanie, that he found the funds for this, this year.
We did, we had to take, we took some from council, um, related. So a portion of it's from there and then the other portion is from, we have a, a fund for when, it's like a contingent, contingency, whenever projects go over the dollar amount, then we have that to go from there, so we took the other portion from that. So we've let the departments know, if their projects go over, then we're gonna have to come to them from their line items in order to do that. But that's where we found the money to do it mid-year, next year we'll have to budget the full ninety thousand.
Right, right, but they found a way to do it, you know? Whether you like it or not, it's not quite as important as, you know, the need for it.
I don't think that we need to go up, I don't think we need to double it. I think increase, uh, commensurate with hotel and airline, uh, flights going up for next year, uh, could certainly be in order. But I have not spent all of my money in, I guess, all these years. We've only got two people who have gone over and so I don't know why we have to go and take so much more money out of the budget when the data's not there that we need to do it.
It's because this is for future councils too, this doesn't have to do with just this council. And also this control that has to go to the audit finance committee. I'm not putting that on some other council member, no, you don't, you don't sit there and try to control what they're gonna do.
We, we did it all the time, we had one council member who consistently overspent what he called his allowance. He would bring it up, say, I need, you know, a thousand dollars to go to this conference. There was always somebody on the council saying, I'm not using all of my travel, you can use mine, we worked it out.
That's fine.
And that's what we did.
That's fine, and we don't have to do that this way.
I think we do.
No, we don't.
Well, that's gonna be my, my proposal.
Then just vote no.
I think on that note, with, um, being able to reallocate or like kinda give other council members, if you have, you haven't used all yours, I think there is like an issue of like the, um, how fast that can happen, so.
Yeah, it has to go to audit and finance.
The finance and audit, but I mean, I imagine we could probably do something where it's like an e-vote or something on that. Um, but bringing it back to the whole council, which is what I think you're proposing.
Absolutely.
Would prolong it even more, so, um, yeah, I do think that sometimes, because we don't have staff, we find out about opportunities for like trainings or conferences, kind of like just late sometimes and these are like maybe colleagues from other cities, um, letting us know, hey, are you going to this or that? And we're like, well, we did know about that, um, and those are situations where I think it would be helpful to consider, especially for, like Mr. Scott said, new council members. Um, not all of us have spent like a million years on council, so it's like helpful to be able to access those professional development opportunities. I've been really lucky that I've gotten like scholarships and stuff to go to some, um, that I've learned a lot and brought back and like shared the information with colleagues or city staff. Um, but I do know, that's also like a privilege that I have, that I have that, um, time to develop professional networks where I get scholarships and I know. If we're, I imagine a time where we're gonna have more working class individuals seated up here and I don't know if they'd be able to benefit the same way I have, so.
And, and in these conferences that I go to, I even get awards for doing all the classes and stuff.
It's so nerdy. No, he, he has like.
And what, and what?
Milagro.
And, and I don't really care about the awards, what value have you brought back to this council? I think that that should be in writing with the, uh, either the credit card use or the, the reimbursement.
Well, that's fine, I'm not worried about that.
I think we'll, I'll have that prepared for, is this?
I'd be live texting Stephanie like, oh my gosh, look at this PDF and she's like, girl, I have a city to run, like calm down.
Anyway.
Matter of fact, I ran into the health pro- provider at the last conference that was coming to meet you. So, no, it's useful and, and we're missing a whole bunch of opportunities to go to conferences, just cause you don't like to go to things like that, doesn't, shouldn't be limiting other people.
I don't wanna go to Washington, I go to other things.
Okay, well, other things come up, like.
Or I don't go to NLC, I'll put it that way.
Well, you should, um, anyway.
Should all be a TMO.
Yeah.
I, I, I've gone to NLC in the past, it's just.
It's, it's good, it's just good.
It's not been what I needed lately.
It's other cities, other cities doing things and others, understanding how they're doing them and how it can work for your city. That's exactly why I like to go to these, to see new trends and, you know, sometimes experimental, but sometimes it works just fine in this community, so. I mean, if I were to pass all the variety of the stuff that I've learned before, I, I have a whole book of stuff that I've provided to the council that I've learned doing this stuff.
So Steph, this would mean that, with the exception of this year, because we found it somewhere else, we will be increasing ninety thousand dollars to our budget, no matter where we pull it from, that's ninety thousand dollars that we're pulling, just, we didn't have last year, we didn't have the year before.
So half of it, you did have, you do have this year?
Right.
Because half of it is coming from those funding sources that I discussed, so we would need to find an additional forty-five thousand for next year to fund it.
But that's gonna permanently reduce that council-related fund, correct?
That's what that would mean, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I, see, I don't understand that, cause again, I've, I've asked a couple times, I found a chart, may I remember this elusive chart that we swear existed? Um, it's in my car, which is not helpful right now, um, but it's, it's, it's just like notes, I think it, I think y'all actually printed it out for us. I still don't understand, uh, basically we have this, a bucket of money, council expenses, but don't we already tap into that, like, so are, now we're just like remixing it so that you, we could use it in the, for travel?
About this chart?
No.
On page two ninety-five?
You have, you have your council budget, that is your, your stipend, um, the money that was supposed to be for like health insurance or something if you needed it, I think that's six fifty now and then you have travel.
Six and a quarter.
So those are, those are the, 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 the three things that you have. And then there's another thing that's in the city clerk's budget and I think now it's actually been moved to council budget, right? John, we, we, when I asked about, it was typically in city clerk's budget and so that's what we're talking about, we took that from council-related. So it's over and above what you individually get, it's a pooled amount of money that, um, that Mr. Devino would have to register you for like other things.
Yeah, so it was that, um, handout and it said like, it said some weird stuff that I don't think any of us have ever used, like to send flowers, memberships, technology.
Those are the things that she would use, so like, for example, if you had like a former council colleague or something like that who passed away and when she wanted to send flowers on behalf of the city council, it would come out of that council-related. Your food, you know, when she does that for meetings and things like that, it comes out of that. So again, it's stuff that benefits the whole versus just one individual, um, council member and that's where that money is.
Yeah.
So that's what's being reduced by the twenty, twenty or twenty, twenty-five thousand?
And, and the mayor's correct, we would reduce that every year unless directed otherwise by council.
I think even that's complicated, sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Even that's a kinda complicated, cause I feel like, like sometimes, uh, it takes a minute for, oh, I'm, I'm guilty of this too, to reply, to be like, oh, do you guys wanna go to this event, right? Even some that are like up the, you know, down the block in Kyle or whatever, um, some like the economic development things. So whenever that happens, it's like, uh, let's say the, a lot of us do wanna go, then that money is pulled from that account for a table. But if it's individually, which has happened as well, I think, uh, uh, for some of them, it's like only a handful of us could go then.
Right.
That money's coming out of.
Of your individual, correct?
Interesting, yeah.
Like there are some things where the, the clerk and I will, in our office will say, okay, let's like split a table or something like that and that way we open it up, you know, to, to our staff and y'all, then that would come out of council-related, it wouldn't come out of your individual accounts.
Gotcha, yeah, so I guess, I know that's like a small part, but I think that kind of, I can kind of see where it would be helpful to move some of the money from there, just cause it's been the case bef- in the past where they ask us if we want to attend some of these events and just like giving my work schedule or other things, like I don't find out till like the day before that I can after all and I've been paying those tickets like out of my own pocket, um, until we got P cards and even then, cause sometimes I'm like, so it gets kind of awkward, um, but yeah, that's interesting, I didn't flush that out.
Regarding the overspending, the new credit card's gonna keep that from happening, correct?
Yes, ma'am, um, yes, ma'am, um, Mr. Locke, uh, has assured us that now we understand that the, uh, Citibank, I think, who, who has our, our per- procurement cards through, that now they have a declining card balance, so that if you're given a certain amount, as long as you stay within your budget, that's the maximum that you could charge.
Is this something that y'all get statements for and can the council member get that information so they know what their current balance is?
So we can log on individually too.
Excuse me?
Like, we can log on individually.
And get, and get your statements. And then I know that, that per council direction prior was to also start giving those, um, statements and s- to, and so those have been coming to Mr. Devino as well to provide to council. So that's another mechanism that has now been, um, provided.
Yeah, I, I really think it would be helpful, maybe.
Within the last year, so it hasn't been like a long time.
Yeah, if there was like a training or something for folk, I, the information for, that, I think it's so valuable for us a- as individual council members to be able to access the city, um, uh, business, as was business city card website because, um, I have found discrepancies and I've talked about it before, where they're like, here's some charges and it, like, I don't see I'm on my end. Um, but also cause it gives like all the information, um, listed, like I just exported mine today. Um, but yeah, that would be, I think that would also be helpful for some of the proposals that you have, like. Then we know, like, this is what you owe city staff. It's just a hassle to log in, I'm not gonna lie.
And the only difficulty that, that we would have is just in the sense of with the P cards, is just ensuring and, and I know Mr. Devino and her team are really the ones responsible for getting with all of you to get your receipts, is just because that's one thing we would want not to reflect on the city, if auditors were to audit us and not find receipts. So that's the only thing, is that even like with us, if we lose a receipt, cause we understand things happen and sometimes people lose it, um, you have to still provide like a memo or something that documents like what you bought, what it was for and all that kinda thing, just so that there's some documentation, cause the auditors will look for that. And the reason for that is because with these funds, if they're not taxable and they're being used for a city purpose, um, we have to make sure that we substantiate that to the IRS. If not, then you would be normally, uh, ten ninety-nine for that at the end of the year, so that you're taxed on it. So there, those are just some things I wanted to bring to y'alls attention that we look at on our end and it's not because we're trying to monitor y'all or tell y'all what you can do or not do, but just because that's something that could be a bad thing on us as a city for managing.
We just have to remember, this is government money, this is property tax dollars or sales tax dollars and this is people's money and to spend a hundred dollars in drinks over a few days and that's coffee and whatever, not alcohol drinks, cause we don't pay for that, I think is absolutely ridiculous, so.
So just to clarify, this is not increasing our eighteen hundred dollars that we get per month for salary. This is.
It's not salaries, it's stipends.
I'm just, just to the public, so this is saying.
Stipend, not salary.
Uh, I'm sorry, this is not what we get paid every month just for being up for the eighteen hundred dollars, this is on our travel and everything like that.
This is a travel expense only.
So in addition to what we get paid every month.
We raised that by a hundred and a quarter a month, a couple of years ago.
Am I reading this right though, the ordinance has stipend and travel expenses?
Because it's, it's, they've, they've always kinda like.
No, but for the sake of the record, it does include stipends, that was the question Mr. Mendoza discussed.
What I'm trying to see is, if this is not really, what we get, the paycheck for us sitting up here, this is our little extras.
This is, this is the travel.
This is our travel and things that we can choose to use, not required to.
It's, it's, it's double A.
Yeah, absolutely.
Correct.
Yeah, it's both.
Okay, but, but our, but our eighteen hundred stays the same?
No.
Is that increasing or anything like that?
It's increasing the stipend, that's the eight, that's part of the, that's part of the eighteen hundred.
No, I know, I'm on page two ninety-five, it's not, it's not.
We get the four, fourteen hundred and then this is also increasing that additional stipend, so that increases it up to like twenty, twenty.
Yeah, y- yes, ma'am, the, the, this ordinance, um, is increasing the expenses elected, which, um, all the council members, um, currently receive seventy-five hundred dollars for and have elected to have that paid to them as a stipend. Um, that would increase by six thousand dollars as well as the additional expense category.
So it's both of the, what, ten ninety-nine eligible stuff? So basically, we're incre- we're increasing what I call this, I'm, I'm, I go, I gotta go monthly, six twenty-five? It's increasing that also? Oh, heck no.
The only one that read it. Uh, I would like to say some stuff, I sat, I sat on this one for a long time because for the sake of the public and just putting my, my business out there, I guess. Um, I took a huge pay cut to take this role, um. Financially, I am struggling to be frank and so I sat on this, when we talk about working class people being in these positions, I mean, I'm twenty-eight years old and I live with my mother because of this. So I, I do understand that this eleven twenty-five additional stipend a month would actually be very, very beneficial for me. Um, but I sat on this for a long time because you are absolutely correct and I do agree with you, this is the people's money and we are literally about to discuss a budget where we are in a deficit. And I'm just afraid that the timing of this, uh, feels wrong. Um, and the amount, the double the amount, um, it, it just doesn't feel right to me at this point. I, I understand what you're talking about, I really do, um, and I'm literally telling you, that would be life-changing for me right now. I could probably make a whole lot more decisions without double thinking on how it's gonna impact me financially. Um, I just don't know if it needs to happen this way.
Well, they're not tied together, we could do one and not the other.
Now, if we wanna talk about a stipend alone, a standalone stipend increase, okay? Uh, but it doesn't sound like all members of this dais have hit, and granted, Lorenzo and I are in a different position, but it doesn't sound like all members of this dais have hit their allotted travel expenses. Um, and so it's the inclusion of that as well that perhaps I'm, I'm a little bit taken aback by, um.
Um, yeah, I, it's still confusing to me what all this would hit, but, um, I think for me, uh, and I get paid pretty decently in my job, my job has been very flexible. Um, but I will say that I, the expectations our, our neighbors have for council members are that of full-time council members. Like that, uh, the way that folks reach out to, I know myself, I know Mr. Gleason, I imagine Mr. Mendoza, Shane, everywhere he goes. The way that folks reach out to, I know myself, I know Mr. Gleason, I imagine Mr. Mendoza, Shane, everywhere he goes. Like, we, um, are situated right between San Antonio and Austin, um, and so. I think our, our constituents see, um, the capacity in which like our neighboring cities can serve them. And, but the thing is, they're also broken, uh, down into districts, so not only do they have smaller pieces of the pie to serve. Um, in terms of their constituent base, but they also have full-time salaries and staff. So I think it's really important to name that, at least my perception is, all hours of the night, like, all hours of the day. People are hitting me up, um, and I, I, I try to bring that community feedback to either city leadership. The mayor, anybody, um, and it's, it's always weighs on me that I have to be. Finding time to like follow up, on the follow-up, on the follow-up, it's, it's. Again, I'm, I'm lucky to be able to do it now, but I've had to, as of recently. Uh, be able to either remove myself from passion projects like the animal services committee, which thankfully, Mr. Mendoza. You know, it's, it's, he's also, uh, passionate about that, so that was an easy pass off, but, um. Yeah, it's just, it's a lot of work, so I just, I think it's important to name that, I do get that the purse. It might be a bad look to some members of our community, but they also have really high expectations for us. And I don't think a lot of our neighbors understand everything that's in our toolbox, when it comes to being able to. Show up for them like they want us to, so.
Who's getting paid besides Austin and San Antonio? I think Flugerville's, was it Flugerville, Ms. Reyes, that was going to be paying a little, I think Kyle's maybe starting to pay a little.
Right, but Kyle's also, uh, sliced and diced into districts, so they also have less people to. Right, so like.
But I mean, the big cities, Dallas, Houston.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll send, it, it is a, a full-time job, that, that is that for them, and they do have staff. But most cities, especially cities where we used to be, it's zip.
Right, and I, I think, like, I, I hear that. Right, I hear that, but we're part of like the fastest growing area, not just in this state, but in the nation, um. And either we are, need to be straight up about what resources we have to serve our community. And it's like, we already created a position that I had been begging for since I got on, which is now, um. What'd you say? I always mess up her name. Um, she's basically gonna be helping with like. Community resource navigation and all that, but like, it took four years, y'all, these last four years, like, I've been doing that, um. Mr. Gleason's been doing that, like, it's just, it's like a lot of work, um, and I get. That probably other cities do things differently, but I'm not super concerned about what they're doing. But if we are talking about trends, most, or there's a lot of municipalities that are having these conversations. Because local power is one of the, the last things that we, that our neighbors have, um. So it's like, how do they, if, if people are feeling genuinely, um. Just like not trusting of the state and federal government, like there, there, there's increases on leaning on their local elected officials. Um, that's a conversation that council members are having across the state.
I, I, I can't speak for our newest colleagues here, um, and I'm sure they're gonna be just as efficient or awesome as we are. But I consider and say that the four of us, or five of us, who are a little older, I know we get hit twenty-four hours a day. And I'm grateful to my colleagues, and again, I'm sure my, my new colleagues are gonna be just as awesome at it, but it's a real honor, but you're right, we do. Work twenty-four hours a day, there's a holiday that, that doesn't matter, but.
And we have unicorn jobs, like you have a unicorn job that is not a job that a lot of people could obtain.
No doubt about that, I am extremely lucky to be able to work nights.
I mean, same thing, um. So it's like, I don't know, I think it's, it's really important to, to take those things into consideration that. Historically, it's been like small business owners, retired folks, um, I, I've been really lucky to serve with more working-class individuals, like I know even. Mr. Gleason's talked about like some sacrifices that he's had to make as well, um, but I don't know, I imagine a world where we, where. People who want to serve their community, um, would be able to have the resources to do so regardless of their job or unicorn. Opportunities like you and I have, Mr. Mendoza.
I have a question, go ahead.
I, yeah, I mean, those are all good aspects of it.
Stay close to that microphone.
But my main focus, when I was thinking about this, was being able to hit areas that I'm not able to hit, like some of these conferences that you. Come up with, and I wouldn't have enough money to do it.
That's true, y'all get FOMO.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff that I'm, you're missing out on by not having the funds to be able to travel and do it. That's my original intent with this to begin with.
When we started talking about this, you make a case for travel, and I'm going back to see where this dollars were sent, spent, um, originally set. And yeah, that, it should probably go up commensurate with what the expenses are. I don't recall us talking about that additional expenses needed to go up. But I'm going to suggest that if you look at page two ninety-five of your packet. The confusing one is this expenses elected, which shouldn't have been had the title travel on it. This one is a confusing one, because it's in an odd place, and I found out the other day, um. From Ms. Reyes, when she said it's what, ten ninety-nine eligible or something. My question is, for that, those dollars of six twenty-five. It's my understanding that most people say, I will take the dollars, I do it, I will take the dollars, and I'm not worried about the reimbursing. I'll pay the taxes on it, cause I'm not gonna turn in a receipt for a pack of paper when I need paper or I need cartridge at home. I figure I'm getting paid enough to buy a neat cartridge, okay? So, my suggestion would be that we just roll that second line there, and let's just be honest about it and roll it into compensation. We can make a notation about the, uh, four fifty that was added years ago before me for insurance. And just make it one entity, so you've got your stipend, or your pay, or whatever you wanna call it. And then we've got the travel and expense, I would say leave the word travel in there, I was shocked to see travel was off of that. Um, and, and I'm not talking about the dollar amounts, I'm just saying for simplicity.
So basically, and, and Mr. Locke, can you remind us, it sounds like it already is, right? The six, the additional six hundred plus dollars is already in the compensation, is that?
We're receiving it, but that's the one, remember the first time we came out, caught, started talking about this? Nobody, it was five hundred, nobody knew exactly where it was, and even, even y'all were trying to figure out, you and Liz were trying to figure out where the money came from and why it was in a. Third bucket.
Oh, I think it's been cleaned up, and that, that's what I'm trying to say, is I think it's now in there, and it says, but I just wanna make sure.
For us, let's just be honest, people are taking it as their stipend, so let's just be honest with the public, that that's what it is, and that's how much we're taking.
How is it accounted for?
But that's how it comes up in our.
Accounted separately, um, but as, as the mayor said, the, the council members, I like to have it paid out as a stipend.
Yeah, if nobody's using it for reimbursable, and why would you, when you could put that money in your pocket and be reimbursed from the other account? I mean, it doesn't make sense.
The thing is, not all of us understood how a lot of this worked, like I didn't understand.
I didn't either.
A lot of the things until I spoke with like past mayors and like past council members, um, but y'all have cleaned up a lot of it. I think it would be helpful to just like, put in, like.
There we go.
What does it mean by?
So.
Month, or, I don't know.
Mayor, I'm understanding incorrectly, so like using this graphic as an example, so rather than having the twenty thousand four hundred and the thirteen five. You're saying just put a single line item for thirty-three nine?
Yes. Because that's what we're doing anyway, it originally was reimbursable expenses. I've, I've asked, and we, the data hasn't been found yet, to say, has anybody ever done that? Again, like I say, if I've got a hundred bucks to be reimbursed, do I wanna take it out of that one, or would I wanna take it out of travel?
But the only, the only thing that I, that, and Mr., we did respond, Mayor, but it was later. Was just that, uh, Mr. Locke said that he believes Mr. Prather's the only one who maybe only took that six. Because if you have somebody who's a government employee.
Can't.
Exactly, and so that helped to separate that, so that they couldn't, it wouldn't be, they couldn't get any of it, right? They could at least get that six twenty-five.
I didn't get the five hundred when I was working at the university.
He could only do the six because it was for run reimbursed expenses.
But that's what I'm saying, I could've kept my job and kept the six.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
I see, I didn't even know that. I just, yeah, I did, I would've, I'm sorry, I would've told you that if.
Yeah, you're the one gave me the information.
Ms. Reyes, that was not, that was not offered to me when I came on council and I was working at the university, I was told I could not take that. I, I got nothing but travel reimbursement.
Can we include that on the website for people who are seeking office, just so that.
I, I literally declined a job at, at university because, yeah, okay.
I think we, I mean, that, that's, that's very helpful feedback.
And that you cannot be a state employee and take this job.
You can, you can, you just can't get paid for both.
Yeah.
You can't take the state paycheck and this one.
Because when we talk about that stipend too, uh, that whole amount, when you actually go, has anybody actually tried to apply for health insurance with just this little amount of money?
No.
Which is why.
Literally, you're only really granted a waiver that's about three hundred and something dollars, but that's only just the waiver to get that base. You still have to pay for the additional.
Well, it was put in.
So it's not a.
Twelve, fifteen years ago, so four fifty may have been okay then, but I think that was one of the reasons why we took the five hundred to, to six and a quarter. Is partly because clearly, health insurance is not obtainable at the four fifty.
It was something that y'all talked about during finance audit committee, because you wanted to see what it was costing kind of for insurance.
Right.
And, and what this city paid even for.
It was matching the city.
And so it was a matching that amount, so that's where that came from.
Which is wild, because y'all get that price, cause you're a city and you have multiple plans, like that wouldn't.
We only have one plan, we're self-funded, we're self-funded.
Cause. Yeah, when I logged in, same as Amanda, like, when I first started my job, we didn't have health insurance. And so I had to work really hard to secure foundation money to give us all, I mean, we all need a health insurance anyways, but. Because with that, what, five hundred some whatever dollars, like, no, in the marketplace, like none, none of them, I cannot afford it.
So, so yes, you can keep your, you can, you, you just can't get two government paychecks. But if you were, but that was the reason why they were separated, was because then you could get the unre- like the unreimbursed expenses, the six.
If there's a benefit, then I'm not, I'm, I will withdraw my suggestion to.
So that's, that's the reason that they were kept like that, but I agree with you.
Nobody was doing it.
Makes it simple, the only one that was, that we're aware of is Jude, is what, is what, um, John was able to research and find today.
That, he did what?
That he just got the, the, the six and didn't get the other, right, that he didn't get the other paycheck, like the, the stipend.
Well, I'm glad to see that, because I didn't get it.
Yeah, I think there's been like multiple different things that, Mayor, you've, you've said, like you didn't know that you could.
And, yeah, we, we've not been consistent in how, but I, but I like this for, for those folks, that's helpful, and I'm just gonna throw this out there. Do y'all know how much more I get a month for being mayor and all the time I spend?
Couple hundred.
I mean, it says it right there.
Two hundred and fifty dollars, just saying.
Mayor, on that though, uh, like for the, for the people who are interested in, in this stuff. Would you be interested in foregoing any potential increases to reduce this overall amount? That way, the people who want what they want can get it, you're not interested and you're foregoing it, meaning you're not.
What do you mean, I'm, I'm not interested, what do you say?
So, there is a proposal for both council and mayoral raises, under this discussion. What I'm asking is, if you're not interested in a mayoral raise and leaving it at the amount that it's set at. At this moment, it's not to say a mayor in the future can't bring it up, uh, but are you interested in foregoing that increase?
I said I would be interested in an increase for next fiscal year, but I think it's irresponsible to try to start changing the budget this year.
I don't disagree with, whether my colleagues like me agreeing or not, I, I, I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying for like, the future, maybe this amount doesn't have to be so high, if you're not interested in collecting it in the first place.
Who said I wasn't interested in collecting it in the first place?
Look, if you are, you are.
She, Amanda, she's like, hey, I could've been collecting this six hundred dollars, let me go get it retroactively.
Uh, and not really complain, but I guess question is, kind to the mayor's point, so her. Extra that she gets for being mayor, on the stipend or the combined stipend, compensation plus expenses elected. Is only two fifty, but her travel, and, and this isn't even just used specifically, anyone that would sit in that seat. I, I think if anything's equal amongst all of us, it's the cost of airfare and hotels. So if anything should be increased, it's the actual compensation, not necessarily the travel expenses for.
The theory is I go to more things, that the mayor goes to more, more things, not that anything we do is more expensive.
We have talked about, but we have talked about that, you go to more things, but you, like the. Professional development education gap between typically those who serve as mayor and like new council members, like. They, one could argue that new council members should be going to more things, because we don't have that wealth of. Institutional knowledge, yeah, so.
Otra vez con la T M L.
I, I went to T M L's, uh, ethics class, it was very educational. I stayed away for the whole thing, ma'am.
I, I have found much more rewarding.
Let's, let's wrap this up, we have a motion and a second for discussion. Uh, to pass this, which, if I, Ms. Reyes, correct me if I'm wrong. Is to add forty-five thousand dollars to the budget that we're in, and it would be ninety going forward, and we wouldn't see it again. We are making that decision tonight.
That's, yes, because we would have to cover that, that expense next year, correct?
Okay, well, they found the money, which means there's less money in, over here, and there may be something we wanna do by the end of the year, and Ms. Trevino's gonna have to say. Uh, yeah, we don't have that money.
Pick for yourself.
So.
How, how much money is left in that bucket when we take this out?
But that's for dinner? And sometimes we have thirty thousand.
If it's, if it's twenty, if it's fifty-five and we took twenty-five, so it's, there's still about thirty.
How much do we spend just on food?
On a, it depends what restaurant, but it's normally about seven hundred, six hundred.
For a meeting.
Pack a sandwich.
Yeah. Okay, so, if I wanted to say, let's do this for next year, but not this year. I would need to go through and make a bunch of amendments and to make all of these others, so.
Well, one of the topic of amendments, I'm assuming if I wanted to split the two raises. Would that just be an amendment as well, so vote separately on the expenses elected being increased? And the expenses incurred reimbursement being increased, can we split that vote and?
Yeah, I also think that the discrepancy between the mayor and the council and like the travel, maybe we like balance that out.
The time, uh, maybe before you were here, I said something about maybe for different committees and things that I'm on. I spend a lot more time, uh, preparing for, I don't know, seven different boards and committees that I'm on. So, uh, you know, we talked about twenty-five dollars per whatever, Hays Cad and, and all these other things. But then it got so complex, I said, never mind. So, I'm going to make a motion to postpone this item to the next meeting. And then if y'all will send me a Word document on here, I'll start with my amendments that I will present when it comes back. Of course, y'all can vote as you want on each item, so I'm making a motion, uh, to postpone, is there a second?
So, we're postponing to the next meeting, so I guess the first March meeting? I, I wanna hear what my colleagues say about this, uh, I'll second for discussions.
Thank you. Uh, what I plan to bring back are the things that I talked about, and then also that it's not for this year, but it is for next year. And I'm gonna, I may, uh, I may propose a different dollar amount, but, uh, I'll, I'll work on that. But that's why I'm looking to postpone, cause I don't wanna try to do all that on the fly right now.
If I'm understanding, you're trying to give, or encouraging everyone to perhaps prepare their proposed amendment. In a manner that, I guess, staff can decipher and maybe put up on the screen or whatever.
I will, I will provide mine, ready to go, ready for the jumbotron as always.
I think if we go in that direction, I would be interested in y'all, like on this chart, putting like. I know it says compensation, but where, just like outline, where did, what, what is the part that has like the. The thing that was supposed to be for insurance, like what, what fund, like.
It's in the twenty forty.
Or can you like put that there, and then it's like, what is coming from travel? Like, and then what is, where does like the, I know folks buy like office supplies, like where's that coming from, like, it, that would be helpful.
I think the health insurance part, if, we could scroll up, is it up on this, John?
It's, it's described inside the content somewhere, but it's not on that, however, I. However, I would suggest. That on this chart, because this is a chart we always refer to, that maybe compensation, new line, parentheses. Includes four fifty for health insurance, which really.
It's six fifty.
Six fifty or something. I was gonna say, it would be the five seventy-five, four fifty plus the one twenty-five.
Okay. Okay.
But that we show the amount that we're, um, that's in there because of health insurance, although some of us who don't need it, we're taking the money anyway.
Right.
Insurance is, is addressed in sections, the subsections A and B.
I get all, it would be.
I understand that, but I think it'll be shown in the chart.
Yeah, cause then I get confused. And then also what people are allowed to take if they do work for, uh, like the state, cause I know we've had several, like, from people who work at Texas State.
That's in there as well, as.
But in the chart, like, it's like not helpful to me, cause we started talking about, oh, where does that, the block of the insurance, like let's lump it in.
Oh, you're saying to put it in the chart.
You wanna translate the narrative paragraphs into a chart.
Yeah, infographic.
Cause this is what we look at.
I need an infographic, so I know when we're start moving.
Yeah.
Buckets, that I know what buckets we're talking about, like, does that make sense?
Put it in the chart, okay.
Um, and then.
And then possibly also.
The tech.
Cause the narrative paragraphs are talking about monthly, and then the chart is annual, and that's kind of confusing as well.
Exactly, I, I wish it was, but, but they're looking at, at yearly because they're looking at what's in the budget.
Right.
You know what? This is interesting, is under eligible, you see the little footnote of one. And down here it says, under Article sixteen, most Texas constitution, certain state and county employees are not eligible. Under expenses elected, it says no.
Right, which is why I got confused with what we said our second.
So, how is somebody who is working for another government entity taking that money? Because the chart clearly says you can't.
Right.
Or do we need to change the chart if there's been a different interpretation per constitution of this fine state?
I was reading the chart, Amanda.
That's what I told you, they wouldn't let me have it.
Is, 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 most council members, um, are likely to just have that paid as a stipend.
Correct.
And the way that Mr. Trevino was, is it was just added to the additional expenses incurred, and so he was being reimbursed, um, that amount. It wasn't being paid out as a stipend.
Uh.
I think we would, if, if that's the way that we want to start treating it, we would just need to probably update and make that.
But if he's eligible for reimbursement, that's what that third bucket is anyway, is travel, and because. When I got here, that was tr- that was basically travel only. We've kinda modified that to and expenses. Which is why I'm saying nobody's using that six and a quarter for that, so, um.
Except Jude.
No, not this one. He gets this one, cause everybody gets this one. The reimbursement for like hotel.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And there's no, you don't pay taxes on it with dollars, either, it's reimbursement. So, I mean, it should have been out of that bucket, not out of the second bucket.
See why I need an infographic? But then also the tech part, cause we also had the discussion about the tech, where it was like, okay, if you're gonna keep the, the item. Then you take it out of, yeah, the iPad computer, then you take it out of the, your own money. Or, but then like on the one pager of the city clerks thing, it, it says that, that money's supposed to come out of there. And if that is money coming out of there, then that's like, that's quite a bit of money for tech.
We also talked about, as you were, I think you were on Finance and Audit then, uh, your idea of gee, first year council members may need more. That maybe that tech needs to be separate, and that's what you get when you come on council, and it shouldn't come out of your travel and expenses, because.
So, the way I understand it, and Mr. Trevino, speak up, cause this is more your, your area, but the way I understand it is that. Um, you provide if it's up to a certain amount, right?
Right.
But then if they want something over and above.
If it's over and above the standard equipment that I T has.
Exactly, so that would come out of council related too.
Well, iPad girlies here.
Okay, so they are doing it that way.
Right, I'd say, I wanna make sure that I'm not.
My iPad came out of my.
And my phone?
And the phones, yes, we have a list.
That all comes out of your council related. It wouldn't come out of your personal unless you want something over and above.
And my monthly phone bill doesn't come against me.
Correct.
Right, no, no.
Although you did do the furniture. I'm gonna have, we're gonna talk about that one.
Now we're following more of the policy, you know, where it's actually stated, you know, cause that's what we used to practice before, but now we're following the policy.
Yeah, so that would be helpful to even outline that, like, that way we know, I think we can make a better informed decision if we have that information.
Yeah.
Mayor, whatever.
Okay, we're, the motion right now in front of us is po- to postpone, and really the only conversation we should be having is regarding, should we postpone or not? So we need to really dispose of that. So are your comments regarding whether or not we should postpone?
I can tie it in there.
Then do that.
I think we should postpone, but I think we should increase the traveling expenses. Uh, on a more acceptable amount than what we have now.
Which is reflected here? Are you talking about more than what's reflected here?
What's reflected there.
Okay.
But, but Mayor, again, that would be, those are the types of motions that would be made at the next meeting if we postpone.
I think he's just saying he supports what the proposal is.
I think he's saying that, that, that's too much. He wants an increase, but not that much, something a little bit more respectful. Well, for the traveling, I'm okay with it, like.
But we'll have that discussion next time. Okay, Ms. Trevino, we're gonna vote on postponement.
Let me hit the button, okay? Dang, I'm gonna flip a coin, I really don't, I don't know. Okay, the motion passes six to one.
All right.
I saw what, yes.
Oh.
His machine.
The machine.
It says no.
His machine still lit up green.
Is that the one that was causing this trouble the other day?
My bad.
Not to put your vote out there like that, but.
In that case, we are moving on with item twelve.
Okay, let me clear this off, Mayor, okay. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight R, authorizing proceeding with issuance of certificates of obligation and further directing the publication of notice. Of intention to issue City of San Marcos, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for certain projects for improving, constructing, equipping, acquiring. And designing the city's airport, cemetery, parks and recreation facilities, streets, alleys and sidewalk, sidewalks, public safety facilities, water and wastewater systems, stormwater management for flood control. And drainage, electric utility system, and the payment of professional services in connection therewith, including fiscal and engineering fees. And costs of issuing the certificates of obligation related thereto, in an amount not to exceed forty-seven million eight hundred and five thousand.
Most approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott for approval and a second from Mr. Mendoza. Mr. Locke, we're glad you're still here.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, this item, um, is to fund the fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital improvement items that, that would be paid for by certificates of obligation. Uh, the first step in issuing the certificates of obligation is to, for City Council to approve a resolution directing the notice of intent to issue those certificates. That notice will be published, uh, once a week for two consecutive weeks in the newspaper and continuously on the city's website. The next and final action, uh, required a City Council would be considering an ordinance to authorize the issuance, and that's scheduled for April fifteenth. Uh, this year there are two notices, um, and that was just an internal tracking mechanism for staff. Uh, to track the wastewater treatment plant separately from all of the other items, so this item is for, um. Forty-seven that million eight hundred and five thousand, and the following item is for twenty million, which is just for the wastewater treatment plant. I, I did wanna mention that we have Dan Wegmiller, the city's financial advisor, as well as Bart Fowler, the city's bond council representative with us this evening. To help address any questions that council may have. And, um, I also wanted to share with, uh, City Council some news that, um, Mr. Wegmiller shared with me earlier this evening. And that is, we are in preliminary talks with the rating agency on a, a rating for the water and wastewater revenue bond. And they've indicated that it would come back in the double A category, which is great news, that's the same rating that the city's tax pledge has. Um, so what, what that would mean is that we would be able to issue, um, uh, revenue bonds for the water wastewater projects. Uh, and they'll be backed by the water wastewater revenue instead of a tax pledge, so to reduce the amount of debt that we're issuing with our, uh, tax pledge.
Okay?
Yeah.
Questions?
Nope.
Thoughts? Well, let's vote.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
On to item thirteen.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine R, authorizing proceeding with issuance of certificates of obligation. And further directing the publication of notice of intention to issue City of San Marcos, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation for certain projects for improving, constructing, equipping. Acqu- acquiring or designing the city's new wa- wastewater treatment plant. And the payment of professional services in connection therewith, including fiscal and engineering fees. And the cost of issuing the certificates of obligation related thereto, in amount not to exceed twenty million dollars.
Most approve.
Okay.
Motion from, um, motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. And questions, concerns? Are we just kinda going with the pat- pattern that you said with the first one? Everything's good, okay. Ms. Garza, you're gonna have to push it again.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, on to item fourteen.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty R, adopting the city's coun- city council strategic plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion? Did you make that motion, Mr. Scott?
I did.
Second.
And I have Mr. Mendoza for the second for approval, I assume.
Yes, I do.
Questions? We spent a couple of days.
I, I just have a motion to amend.
Okay.
Um.
Do we have it up here to look at?
Uh, I, I was gonna pull the, so if we could go to section four, related to mobility and connectivity?
Or I guess number four, I should say.
Okay.
I spoke with some members of the, uh, transit equity cabinet and, um, following their brilliant presentation, following all of our seemingly amenable, um, nature. Yes, ma'am. So this is just explicitly saying, um, uh, and I didn't know necessarily where y'all would like this, whether it be B, C, whatever. Um, I had it under per, maybe perhaps subsection C, which is transportation and traffic operations, but it may, we can find a home, uh, I guess. But my language was simply to, uh, implement recommendations, impl- yeah, implement recommendations from the San Marcos Transportation Equity Cabinet. And it is transportation, not transit, right? I don't wanna.
It's transportation.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Carrie Fontenot, Assistant to the City Manager, and we received that email earlier today, and I also agreed that C is a perfect place for that. Maybe D, under public transit as well, but I do think C, transportation and traffic operations is more appropriate.
I would think so. Um. Have we already said as a council, let's implement all of those things? Or was that to come back to us in more of a one, two, three?
Hmm, what, what council said, um, was to go ahead and support and put them in the transportation and transit master plans, and so was it, they, that was what?
Without further inspection?
That, that was the, the recommendation seemed like they were pretty amenable to the council when the, when they were presented.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, matter of fact, one of the questions I posed when it was under discussion was, uh, what the next steps were to be taken if all of us agreed, and we all said we agreed.
Yeah, we need transportation, there's, there's a word missing in the new text that's written up there. That just says San Marcos Equity Cabinet, and I think it.
Transportation Equity Cabinet.
Right.
Yes, ma'am, good catch.
Okay, we can include transportation there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that was an amendment, I need a second for, okay, we have a second. Transportation equity, I'm sorry, who was the second? Uh, Lorenzo Gonzalez. Any further comments, thoughts? We'll vote on the amendment.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, any other amendments? If not, we'll vote on the main motion to approve as amended.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, on to item fifteen, discuss and consider appointments to the Comprehensive Plan Oversight Committee. And provide direction to staff, I think this is just. Appoint some ones? So, um. I believe this is a committee of seven, correct, Ms. Trevino?
Yes, ma'am.
And I believe what we have done before is each council member appointed a person, okay.
I, I have mine, if nobody else is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Um, I was going to select, um, uh, Dr. Ray, Rosalie S. Ray. I told you, don't even act. Well, if, uh, if some of y'all wanna take her, I have two, I have other options that I was interested in, so. Having backups.
I would go in reverse chronological order.
Was anybody like that was your only one?
Somebody claimed Dr. Ray.
Okay, so I'll just go with Dr. Ray.
You're going, okay.
Yes, ma'am. She's popular.
No, she, she, she will be good there. Uh, yeah, on this, you know, this, actually having this, uh, uh, committee was my idea years ago. And at that time, uh, what we wanted to make sure of, we, we did our best to take people who were on the comp plan committee. Who knew and understood, in this particular case, we've also got some focus groups, um, that were highly involved, as opposed to someone who's never, ever seen it. I do think that per Dr. Ray's, um, she did read it very thoroughly, had some suggestions, this is in her wheelhouse, I loved it. This is the Venn intersection of what I do, so, yeah, no, no, that, that's good. Others?
Uh, I wanted to recommend, uh, Gabrielle Moore.
I'm sorry, say the, last name again?
Moore, right, right, Dr. Ray. Gabby Moore.
Oh, I thought you said, I thought you had a different first name, okay, so you are. Rick, she also was one who was very involved in the comp plan and making suggestions and things. Others? We don't have a lot of people who are on the plan, but we have several people who, um, had provided a lot of feedback, very involved in the plan.
I'm actually gonna nominate, uh, appoint Robert Eby.
Right, and just to make it clear, to reiterate, the mayor, the, the ordinance specifically says each council member gets one, so. It's, it's not a, a, a vote by the group.
Well, we'll vote to formally put him on when it's all said and done. Okay, Mr. Scott?
Um, Cody DeSalvo. I didn't pronounce that right.
DeSalvo, I think his name is.
DeSalvo.
Yeah, he's somebody else that was, um, clearly will bring something to the table. Done here? Got another one? Mr. Gonzalez?
I, I thought I mentioned, uh, Mr. Garber, maybe it was another.
He, he didn't turn in an application.
Is this one of those that we can still choose?
I hope so, cause my person, there are just, she, she, some things have been going on in her life, she was not able to complete an application, but I'm gonna put her name forward.
Well, we did that for, um, the charter committee.
Yeah.
I, I, I find that to be fair.
Yeah, I'm pu- I'm putting the name of Lisa Pruitt forward.
Oh, that's good.
Uh, Lisa served on one of the focus committees this last time.
Yeah.
She was the, one of the co-vice chairs of the comp plan the time before when I was chair. Six years as city council member, I think she would be excellent on this committee. Yeah, and when she's, when she's involved, she's involved. Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Garza?
I, I passed, ma'am, ma'am.
I can't pass.
Oh, okay, just give me a few minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna, so, Luntzola has Gabby.
He does.
Amanda has Rosie.
You're correct.
Shane had Cody, Cody's.
He did. Well, one of the Codys, Cody DeSalvo.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, and then.
There's another Cody who spent a lot of time on the plan and, uh, was quite involved.
You said Lisa.
Lisa Pruitt.
I don't know yet, hold on, I don't know.
Did someone choose Lisa Pruitt?
I did.
Yeah, she.
Good choice.
If not, we will be, be voting two for two, so you can vote yes or no as you see fit. Uh-huh.
Oh, come on, listen.
When the number nominated equals the number of, it's not blinking, oh, that's blinking.
I'm like, I press anything.
Yeah, until it's blinking, it's not gonna listen to you.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All righty, we have the Construction Board of Appeals, and we have a Mr. Randall Farrell who has volunteered. And I forget what his occup, is...
He's a master's...
Plumber, okay. So I will put his name in play. Are there any others? If not, we will vote.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
It was, um...
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, we're good, yeah.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, and for Economic Development, a Mr. Michael Williams has turned in his application, and he is, that is applicable for the CEO finance position. And just so you know, it looks like we're, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Trevino, that we're still looking for a medium business representative and a small business representative.
Yes.
However, I, I feel that, I hope I'm not speaking out of school, one of our members who's the manufacturing business would also qualify as a small or medium, so if you know somebody who's in manufacturing, we don't fill the other, we might be able to move it around a little bit. So, because Josh would qualify for both. So that leaves him on there, but that just depends on what applications we get and what slots they can fill. But for now, I've got Michael Williams for Economic Development. Are there any other nominations?
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
The small business and the medium business, are they full terms or are they like on three?
They'll be full terms. The, the people in those slots have, had done two terms and were not eligible for reappointment. We'll vote, we've got one for one.
Ms. Garza? Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Housing Authority Board. Need four?
Just one.
Just, yeah, just one.
Just one, sorry. I wrote this down wrong.
I'm gonna nominate Jessica Ubezi.
Sorry, Ms. Mendoza, did you nominate something?
I'm sorry, Jessica?
Jessica.
Ubezi.
I'm, I'm, I'm remembering how many we had available the first go-around, so I'm...
She, she was also one of mine, but I will say, if I could put another name in, it was Taylor Fawcett. She's an actual resident in this particular, you know, in, in the housing authority, and so...
Hold on, we, did we need that position?
She's retired.
I thought we had that.
Hold on, I gotta look at my other, the old one. Ms. Trevino, was that position, that slot filled?
For the resident?
Uh-huh.
Hold on, Mayor, let me look at my...
No, the person who was the, no, wait a minute.
I think we still...
It's not noted on our...
I don't think I have Ms. Lucia.
Yes, they are filled.
It's not noted on here who the resident is.
Well, they're all residents, and then we just need one social worker.
No, resident of the housing authority.
That one is full.
It's...
We do have a filled one.
I'm sorry.
This is just a plain resident, like...
Yeah, so I wasn't, I wasn't trying to base it on, like, meeting that requirement.
No, I was thinking we needed that position, though.
Oh, yeah, I see that. No, it was just simply honoring the fact that, that she lives and I think has lived in the housing authority for a while.
Um, we do need to mark who is serving in the resident slot, the housing authority resident slot. That was not on our original list, so I don't know if that position, I should have asked that before. Okay, so we have two people nominated. One is a resident of the housing authority. So this time you will need to give Ms. Trevino your name of either Jessica or Taylor, if you would please.
And this, would, would it help for you to, for us to do first or last name?
Just first name.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Rodriguez?
Uh, Taylor.
Taylor? All righty, Mr. Gonzalez?
Taylor.
Ms. Garza?
Tina.
Mayor Houston?
Taylor.
Mr. Scott?
Taylor.
Mr. Mendoza?
Jessica.
And Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Taylor.
Okay, Ms. Taylor.
All righty, and now we go on to the Library Board. I would like to put the name of James Pendergast in. I saw him at some event last few weeks. He did not know that we had already done our appointments, and he indicated some things that he could perhaps bring to the Library Board, so I will put his name forward.
Well, you beat me to it.
Oh, good. I'll put us both down for nominating.
There you go. I'm a big fan.
He brings a whole new dimension.
I liked his application.
Yeah, I've known him for a long time. Any other nominees? One for one.
Okay. Mayor, there you go. Mr. Mendoza, Mr. Scott?
I did, yes.
Y'all went too fast, it took a second to blink.
There we go.
And now Shane.
Or is it Melissa's?
No, mine is, mine says yes. Is it that one?
Do you vote? He's pushing the button, I see him.
There goes, seven to zero.
They're still swapped, that's why.
Which are still swapped?
These two are, because yours was still blinking.
That makes sense.
And then you clicked it, and then Shane.
But he did push it.
Start up with, under Shane.
He did push it, he just did it.
We need to, we need to check that. All right, but we are, we were seven oh?
Yes.
For Mr. Pendergast. Next, we had Neighborhood Commission. We have a volunteer for Sector Nine. Sector Three still remains lonely, but we have someone for Sector Nine.
Thank you, Mark Murphy.
I actually wanted to forward a different name for Sector Nine, not, he told me a...
Sure, I didn't, but Mike Murray, who's in Kissing Tree.
That's whose name is on here.
Mike Murphy.
Mike Murphy, Mike Murphy.
I, it's, I think it's the same one. I noticed that it was one on the application and different on our chart.
Murphy, Murphy?
Murray and Murphy.
Really?
Murray and Murphy.
What's his, which, which is his name, correct?
Mark Murphy.
Okay, and?
I think that's...
I've got Mark Murray is on, oh, it's on my voting sheet.
Yeah, there's two different last names, I'm sorry, Mayor.
But the person in Kissing Tree is the one whose name I was suggesting.
Which is?
Which is the same guy.
Mark, Murray.
Murray, yeah.
Which area it is. Anybody got the application document up?
It's Murray.
It's Murray?
M-U-R-R-A-Y.
Okay, so this is right, and the other thing's wrong.
Dancing Oak Tree, that's, that's in...
I think Kissing Tree.
Okay.
Which is Willow Creek and Kissing Tree is nine.
Okay, so Mark Murray then.
Mark Murray.
All right, so that was just a table on our hand up.
Yes.
Makes sense.
We talking about the same dude?
Okay, sounds good.
One for one.
Hold on, Mayor, I, there it goes, oh my goodness. There it goes. It passes seven to zero.
All right, Parking Advisory Board, there are slots for downtown, somebody's got a business down there, or Downtown Association, et cetera. This is a, an at-large position. And Gabrielle Moore has said, I think I would like to do that, or I definitely would like to do that, so her name is on the list. Any others? It'd be great to have a full complement on that board.
I agree.
Okay, Mayor, hold on. So wait now.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Senior citizen. Ms. Trevino, how many do we need?
We need four, and we have four applicants.
One of, one of whom wants to be reappointed. So I will put the name of, names of Haley Montenegro, Jan Little, Jill Mace, and Sandra Baggett in play. Are we good?
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
Do we have a vacancy on Housing, I'm sorry, Zoning Board of Adjustments?
We do not have an applicant.
Okay, an applicant who can apply for the position.
I'm sorry?
An applicant who can apply for the position.
Okay, 'cause that was gonna be my question, okay. Yeah, I saw the applicant, I mean, it's kind of cool in theory, but, yeah.
There was that. Okay, I would, I will make a motion that we, no, we already voted on these, never mind, I need to do that for comp plan. Okay, folks?
Well, I guess you talked about Cody, that he was pretty well versed in a different board. I'd like to nominate him on, for my choice.
But which Cody?
There it shows.
The Cody L?
Empty, oh, okay.
That's the one?
Yes.
He'd inspected it, and he was very, very good about being very crisp and clear with his suggestions and such.
I'm gonna do Sarah Simpson.
Okay, then to formalize this, I'll make a motion to accept the names of Sarah Simpson, Cody Lantelmay, Robert Eby, Gabrielle Moore, Rosalie Ray, Cody DeSalvo, and Lisa Pruitt. And I'll accept a second for that.
So move.
I'll take Ms. Rodriguez's second on that. And so we will need to vote.
Okay.
Okay.
We're just trying to see what's going on.
So you are Shane?
Yes, yeah. So Saul hasn't clicked on it.
So that also does though impact, you took a no vote earlier, and I think Saul took a yes vote, and it showed Saul was a no.
That's true, he said it was a yes, but it should have been a no over here. What was that?
Yeah, so the record should probably reflect.
That was the data center thing. No, that was a postponement of the...
That was postponement for the council.
But there was also a vote taken, though, I, I could have sworn you, he voted.
We didn't vote.
No, but, but we did vote on, on number eight, which was another thing related to the data center.
Oh, yeah.
And it was like two, two of us who voted no, and it showed...
It was just you two.
It was you and Ms. Garza.
Oh, just us two?
On number eight, sorry.
Yes, on number eight.
What was the vote?
It was five to two.
Who was it?
With Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Garza, no.
All right. Okay, so we have now concluded fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Item seventeen.
Discussion regarding qualifications for members of the Parking Advisory Board under section 2.172 of the City Code and provide direction to staff.
Folks, when I was reading through the qualifications, because I was reminding myself, because we had changed them about downtown business and appointed by the, or recommended by the Downtown Association, I discovered that we do not note city residency for this one. That is less of concern for me if someone has a downtown business, but for the at-large, they really need to be city residents, I would think. That's consistent with everything else that we do. So are y'all good if staff brings back a...
Oh, yes.
We're good with that?
Yeah, that's true.
We're, everybody's saying yes, nobody's saying no. So is that all you need, Mr. Gary, Ms. Trevino?
Yes, Mary, that's...
Okay, and Ms. Trevino, if you'll read item eighteen?
Discussion regarding staggered terms of office for members appointed to the Human Services Advisory Boards under section 2.231 of the City Code and provide direction to staff.
This is similar. Our ordinance actually says that they serve three-year terms, but we appoint half of them in one year and half the next. That doesn't work. So my suggestion is that we make them like all the rest of them, three-year terms. It's three, two, and two. How that shakes out with whoever's on there and what their terms are, we can kind of work that out later. But I don't know why that commission is not the same. Ms. Case and I went through and did some of these a few years ago. For example, the Parks Board was only a two-year term. And we were, and half of it was flipping, you know, up each year. And why they were different from the others in not three years, I don't know.
We did have like five, five vacancies on HSAB, right? When we talked about it? That's why it was?
We did, and that's why, you don't want that many up each year. So anyway, this is just to fix that, so if y'all are good, staff will bring that back to us, and then we'll let them figure out who gets the three. Usually if you ask for volunteers, you'll get them, or they can draw cards or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a yes. Ms. Trevino, would you read our executive session items, of which we will need to go into executive session?
The City Council will convene an executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code, A, section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding one matters related to various contracts for the city's provision of emergency medical services, and two, the matter of Whisperer Master Community LP versus City of San Marcos, cause number 24-2917 filed in Hayes County District Court and possible settlement offer, B, sections 551.072 real property and 551.087 economic development to deliberate the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property and possible economic development assistance for project ABSM.
Need a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Mr. Scott made the motion, Mr. Mendoza did the second. We'll vote on going into executive session.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will go into exes, executive session at 8:43. You may take a two-minute break, join us in the conference room.
Now, you sent Barbara the Zoom link, because I just sent her the, for the audio.
We have returned from our executive session, which we concluded at 11:18. Question and answer session with press and public, no one has signed up, no one is here. There being no further items on our agenda, I will adjourn our meeting at 11:22. Thank y'all.